I call, uh, August the twentieth twenty twenty one, emergency meeting to order. This time, I would like to ask, uh, if Mr. McCoy would lead us in our invocation, followed by Mr. Allen West, if he would lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please say it.
Just gonna say it in bow, please. To have the Father, Lord, is, once again, long as we find ourselves looking to the hills from which come up our help. For the lives of all that all of our help comes from thee. And tonight, Lord, we will be remiss if we didn't acknowledge how good you've been to us. And tonight, Lord, as we prepare for this very important meeting, this emergency meeting, Lord, we pray that we make the right decision tonight and not necessarily the popular decision. And, Lord, we pray that you will be within our midst. You say it in the word, Lord, that where two or three are gathered, that you will be there. We pray for that tonight. We will be forever give you your name the first. This is our prayer. Amen.
Salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag. United States of America.
Which stands one nation, run by God. Hand of this God. It's liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so very much. At this time, um, Ms. Valerie Newton, I yield to you.
Thank you, sir. As I call your name, please announce your attendance. Chris Clark. Chris Clark. Dennis Edwards. Okay, Dennis Edwards. Dennis Edwards. Tim Benton. Gary Rota.
Yeah.
Vincent Rosier.
Here.
Corey Singletary.
Here.
Alan West.
Here.
Glenn McCoy.
Yeah.
Roger Carroll.
Here.
And Gary Grady.
Here.
Mister Chairman, you have eight in attendance and one absent, and your board chair is in attendance.
Thanks so very much. Uh, at this time, I need a motion to accept the agenda.
Motion to approve it, now, Wes.
I have a motion to accept the agenda by Chris Clark, a second by Mister McCoy. Any discussion? Now, I yield to you, Ms. Valerie.
As I call your name, please indicate your vote. Chris Clark. Dennis Ed- I'm sorry, Dennis is absent. Tim Benton. Gary Rota.
Hi.
Vincent Rosier.
Hi.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Hi.
Corey Singletary. Alan West.
Ah.
Glenn McCoy.
Ah.
And can I go back and ask what Chris Clark's vote was? I did not hear that.
Ah.
Thank you. Roger Carroll.
Ah.
Mister Chairman, you have seven yeses and one no.
Thank you so very much. Um, Dr. Atkinson.
We're at the house tonight to know the board approved on August. Take the question for masks. It's only encouraged for students and staff. All students and staff will be required to wear masks when riding a bus. There's been concerns, um, and, um, increases in the staff with positive cases and exposed students. So I want to share again with the board, uh, the four options that were presented on that night. The details of those, to see what's better for the board. Option A requires masks, or masks would be required for all students and staff regardless of their vaccination status. The only exceptions would be for outdoor activities and athletic participation. Um, and of course, guidelines would be developed to govern the mask. Nineteen protocols for athletics for the outdoor activities. All students and staff will be required to wear masks when riding a bus. This option would be reviewed on a monthly basis by the board. Option D, masks would be required for all students and staff unless they're fully vaccinated. The only exceptions would be for outdoor activities and athletic participation. And then, of course, they would be required when riding a bus. And that option would also be reviewed on a monthly basis. Option D, masks are only encouraged for students and not required. Staff would be required to wear masks unless you're fully vaccinated. Then all students and staff would be required to wear masks when riding a bus. And, of course, option D, which is currently in place, masks would be strongly encouraged for students and staff if not required. However, all students and staff would be required to wear masks when riding a bus.
Now, take the motion. I didn't hear, I didn't hear his, I didn't hear his motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept option A.
Okay, Vince, that's cool. I, I know where he is.
I have a, I have a motion on the floor to accept, um, option A by Mister Rosier, and a second by Mister McCoy. Any discussion?
Do we have any here by our way? Well, the students, uh, clearly what our principals have been, is encouraging is to request parents that their child has been vaccinated. If they would please provide to school a copy of the card. That would help, Ursula, correct me if I'm wrong, that would help if there was an exposure or positive case depending, um, on whether they've been vaccinated or not. They were going to ask, uh, if they would voluntarily send a vaccination card, uh, for their child, uh, to school. The same thing as we'll, uh, staff, whenever we had that, we do. When there's an exposure, we do request. If you have been vaccinated, please provide a copy of the card to the, to the school. So, uh, you know, going into it on Monday, obviously, start school, that would be something that they would have to request, uh, from families on the student's part, and then staff, we gather those when there are exposures.
Before we vote, two, two things. Number one, we're going to be able to go back in and revisit this decision. But as of today, I both can pray that we make the right decision for the children, not for us and for a certain group of people. I say that because when I, when I look at statistics, and some of us don't believe in statistics, but there are people who specialize in statistics, like we specialize and supposed to specialize in education. There are people who are qualified, and at the same time, learning, they're a crowd. And what I've read clearly indicates this is something we need to do. Now, Columbus County voted unanimously, and that is unbelievable. Anytime you can get them to vote for anything where all of them agree, you know it's, it's got to be something very important. So let us be mindful before we vote tonight that this decision is going to be the most important decision we've made since we've been on this board, in my opinion. Because it's going to affect, it's going to affect the lives of many people that you don't even know about. Now, we've lost a lot of people in my community, and we've lost, and we have many people who are sick. Now, I am not going to fool myself and, and make myself believe that this thing is not real. It's real. And tonight, we're going to see how smart or either how, whatever we are, or whatever our decision is going to be tonight. I think it's already been decided, in my opinion. And the only reason I'm saying this is because I want you to know how I feel about it. I haven't been that outspoken about too many things since I've been on the board. But this is something I am outspoken about because it has affected my family. And I want us to make the right decision, not no popular decision. I don't care about the other people, though, as long as we make the right decision.
Right. Hold on. Anybody else?
Yeah, I have something to say.
Mister Ben's got the floor this time.
From the beginning of this, I've seen and felt like that parents should have the opportunity, and the right, and the right, that I think they should have also had the opportunity to raise their children as they see fit. And as we have it right now, before we vote tonight, every parent in our school system not only has the right, but they have the opportunity to raise their child as they see fit. But if we change the decision that we have made tonight, we're taking away from some of those parents the opportunity to do that. I don't think it's right for us. Those people have the right and the opportunity to do what they want to do, yet they deny other people the right and the opportunity to do what they want. Coach, I don't think how we make our decisions tonight is going to determine how smart we are.
I think we're going to be proactive. I think, I think we're going to be governed by what we do tonight. I think if we make a bad decision tonight, and later on, we're going, and things don't go the way you think, or I think it should go, we're going to be held accountable. You can count on that. But why be held accountable for something when you can do something so, that has already been done and been proven? It's been proven not only in this system, but in all the other systems. The mask is not a problem. The problem is the person who's going to, well, you know, you know, you can control, you can control many things in this life, you know, and a classroom teacher can control that class. If, if that teacher is competent, then no doubt in my mind, she can control having a mask on. Mask is not going to be a problem for us to wear. It's going to be a problem if we don't wear it.
And right now, the way we have it, everybody in our system can wear a mask if they want to. And I'm not correct. Anybody who wants to wear a mask can wear a mask. We're not denying anybody that right.
I'm of the opinion, look, we're not fussing either. We just, right. I'm of the opinion that some of our rights end where other people's rights begin. You know, some of our rights end where other people's rights begin. You know, there's some people that are, are, have sicknesses that you may not have, I may have. But I've got to respect them. It's my right to, to show them that, that this is the right way for me to treat them. You know, if, if you go in a movie theater, well, you have the right to say what you want to say, but get up and say, fine, that's, that's crazy. You, there's some things where your rights, especially when it deals with my physical being. That's where we-
Mister, uh, Mister Carroll. I, I just want to say, I, I, I just want to say, I just want to say that we have a social contract with each other, and let's go ahead and vote.
Well, um, we, we have this time of discussion, and I want to give everybody their chance to discuss. Um.
That's all I have to say tonight. I received a lot of people calling. Uh, and I had a responsibility to say what I had to say. I'm not just saying it because of popularity, because there's a certain group that want me to say that. It's because it needs to be said. And we are responsible board members, and we have an important decision to make tonight. And the decision we make tonight, we must be together. We must realize one thing, it's going to have an effect on the whole board. It's not going to be just Clark's decision, it's going to be my decision too. I'm going to be held accountable for what we do tonight. So you need to know how I feel about it. Never, we're so strong there about an issue, but this is something that, that needs to be said.
Uh, I won't argue with any thing that, um, Mister McCoy has just said. I would just like, uh, to say this, uh, and ask a question to our school nurse. Uh, I go back to what Mister Benton said. If a child is sick, they wear a mask to school. And a child that is not, and does not wear a mask to school, is the child that is really sick, is she protected or he protected?
I'm asking that question, Chairman Carroll. Um, so let me explore the protocols that, that, that's confused and that's on the table. So here's the scenario. If we go with everyone, universal mask. If we have a positive individual, a positive individual has exposed ten students with universal mask, and the only individual that will have to go home and isolate is the positive COVID individual. The ten students, if they, he or she are wearing masks, and they do not have any symptoms, they will not be sent home from school. However, if the, we do not go with universal masks, and the positive source does not have on a mask, and those ten students have on a mask, those ten students will be quarantined from school. We've already been doing it, we, we have sent home, how many do we have quarantined?
A hundred and seventeen are quarantined, and what's the best?
Uh, it would, it would drastically reduce the number of students missing class time.
But you're just confused. I mean, because if you have a mask, I have a mask on, you have a mask on, I come up positive, you're going to send me home, but you're not going to send you home because of the mask, correct?
That is correct. The positive, the one that has COVID, that is universal, that individual has to isolate at home.
Okay, so what's the difference in if I have a mask on, you don't have a mask on? You're positive, I have a mask on, so I'm protected. I shouldn't be sent home because I'm wearing a mask.
But that, that's the guidance, Chairman Carroll, that if, if, if one, that source, that positive individual does not wear a mask, it doesn't matter whether we have on masks or not, we're being quarantined, sent home, our children are being quarantined and sent home. And that was a point I think Mister McCoy was trying to convey. We are, and we are infringing on others' rights. When we have people that are concerned, that they're going to take this virus home to grandparents and things like that, and they send their children to school in masks, and then you have one positive case without a mask that sent, okay, we are, I have an example. We, we quarantined twenty students at a school because the positive source did not have on a mask. The twenty students, Rick, whether some had masks, some did not. But because that positive source did not have a mask, all twenty of those students are currently in quarantine. Um, so-
But they can be tested, they should be able to be tested, and if they are not negative, they should be able, or not positive, they should be able to return to the classroom.
Uh, that is, that is true. Um, there are different scenarios to get you back to the classroom early. One is you take your full ten days and you're out. The second one is if you have, if you develop symptoms, you have to quarantine for the full ten days, and you have to be, you know, fever free, that type thing, before you return. So the third option is seven day quarantine, and you test negative no earlier than day five of the quarantine. Then you may return to school on day eight. So there is a shortened quarantine period, but it's seven days. That's a lot of educational time.
Right.
So that, that's the guidance, the way it's written, and, um, you know, the percent's really high right now. We're like seventeen point nine percent. Um, and as Dr. Atkinson stated, this is addressed every month. But whenever the numbers start going down and the cases drop, you know, the state wants the percent positive rate to be five percent or less, then we can start taking away, you know, some of the restrictions. But, you know, it's, well, that one example that we have already done this school year, and we haven't even opened the doors yet, uh, twenty children have been quarantined because the one source did not have a mask on, so.
Okay, my, and, and, and again, I will support this board's decision, and whatever they say. Um, I do care about students, but the, the bottom line is, in, in a perfect world, this would work. You know, it really would. But you go back to when they get out of school, they take, I think, a bus on the way here. Child got off the bus, didn't have a mask on. Don't know what school that was, but it, that's where it was at. Um, in a perfect world, what, this would work. But on the weekends and during the week, kids are going to Walmart. Kids are going to Dollar General. Kids are going to the grocery store with their moms and dads. They're everywhere without masks. They're, they're, it, it's out there, and they're being exposed. A lot of them's going to bring it back to the school, where they didn't get exposed at school, they got exposed where they went.
That's why I'm giving them masks. That's why I'm giving them masks in the school.
E- even the adult, I got the floor. E- even the adults, you know, they're not wearing a mask around their children. So they're exposing their children. So like I said, uh, I, I understand, it is real. I got, I got people right now that saw him being, I believe it. And, um, but at the same time, um, you know, I just think that this is, this scenario that we have in place would work because in the school system, they're going to be eating lunch. In the school system, they're going to be talking, they're going to pull the mask down. We know that, we were told by teachers, by the end of the school year, they were tired of telling the kids to pull the mask up because they were wearing them under their chin. So we know this is not a perfect solution to what's happening. And again, uh, I agree with my brother here, Mister McCoy. I agree with Mister Benton, and, uh, I thank you for your information.
I want your opinion. It is my opinion that it's going to get worse than what it is right now. That's my opinion, and the reason being is this. Uh, I look at statistics. Back in July, statistics say that we had three hundred kids daily that was getting affected by the virus. That statistic have risen to fifteen hundred in August. That remind me of something that happened about fourteen months ago, how those numbers kept going more.
They kept increasing, and, and Doctor Duncan did say that we have not peaked yet with this virus.
I know, no way we've had. So, so if we must be proactive, we can't, we cannot afford to wait. That's my, that's mine.
Well, I agree with you.
You know how much that's worth. And thank you, we value, we value.
Mister Bay.
My question is, if people are wearing masks and they don't have COVID, why are they being sent home? Now, you told what the protocol was. But if masks work, if they had on a mask and they don't have COVID, then they shouldn't be sent home. And if they are, I think we need a means of testing them to see if they are indeed positive or negative, and they don't have any symptoms, and they were just exposed to somebody, and they're tested negative, they should go back to school. Because if not, we're never going to get back to a, a normal school day, as long as the world exists if we keep doing this. And one other question, and I, later on. I would like you to explain to me what constitutes exposure. Because we have one person, uh, tests positive, for example, and then we got forty people that we send home because they're exposed to it. Now, if those forty people had on masks, and they get sent home, I say, I just don't understand. If they got on a mask, and they were exposed to it, one person, they got on a mask, they should be protected. Just to make sure, we can, just give them to test them and see, and then, once we test them and they're negative, they ought to be able to go back to school. I find it hard to believe that forty people. I've been, I've been a lot of football practices and things in my time. It's hard for me to believe that forty people were congregating around one person for fifteen minutes or more of time. Uh, whenever so, they were in groups, moving, uh, I just don't see how, I, I- I'm not necessarily fussing about wearing the mask. I had been against wearing the mask when it did go. I said, I don't care if every student wears a mask. I just wanted to be their parents. Decided whether or not they wear a mask, not some government entity telling them what they got to do. So explain to me what constitutes exposure, and maybe I'll understand it a little bit. Because I want to understand.
Well, it is in the strong school toolkit that we, you know, use. And, um, quarantine, the definition of exposure is that it is determined that we have been in six weeks of one with COVID for a period of this time of fifteen minutes or longer over a twenty-four hour period.
Um. As you say, we're adding all those minutes and seconds together. It's not a continuous fifteen minutes.
Right, for example, if, if I, if you have COVID and I was supposed to use five minutes in the morning, we got off the bus, and lunch time, we had thirty minutes of lunch to do together, you know, after school. So, yes, those, as, those minutes are cumulative. And as far as testing, if I'm exposed to you right now statistically, I'm not going to test positive. The ideal time for testing is five to seven days after the last date of exposure to a positive source. So an immediate test, I'd be right now, would probably be, um, inaccurate. So that's why the testing is recommended five to seven days after a positive source. And so, you know, that's the, and that was the guidance that I explained from Chairman Carroll's question. There is a reduction now in the amount of time that students and staff have to be out of school quarantine if they are not symptomatic. They may get that test no earlier than day five. So day five to seven, they may test and return to school on day eight. Uh, so quarantine would include all of the individuals that have that criteria, you know, for exposure, that within six weeks or fifteen minutes along with. And it is, it's a team approach to determining who has been exposed. The principal's always involved, coaches, you know, teachers, the appropriate people that have been around our students make the decision of this- the appropriate people that have been around our students make the decision of this, this, this group was exposed. But, um, that's my answer to this question.
Uh, listen, one thing there, I do understand better, but it just created a couple of places.
Okay, well, may I get a chair?
What kind of information or data is on, on the false positive zone, is there?
Um, I have no information on false positives. Our criteria is if, um, if we get, if we have someone with symptoms, and they have a negative rapid test, a quick one, it's recommended that they follow that up with the PCR test. That's the one that's sent off, and it's, it's more accurate, and get that report. Um, and if we get a positive quick test, a rapid antigen, or a positive PCR test, our guidance is you accept that as a positive COVID. Whenever we get a phone call, Mr. Benton, that, my child has tested positive, we, we ask for a copy of that report to make sure that it is a positive test, not that we think anyone could give false information. But we do not want to quarantine students until we have definitely seen that positive report. If it's a case where parent does not have a, of that positive, we're, we're supposed to see, we verify it with the health department before we quarantine any students.
No matter if they're false positive or not, at some point in time, they would have to be retested again pretty quickly. Is there a timeframe, also, you can test? What about reactions to vaccines? Um, what, what information? So, you know, I've, uh, I've read a lot, a lot of things. Everybody's got an opinion. Everybody thinks they're right and correct, and that's the way it should be. And there, there is a difference at night and day, from as far as east is from west. Um, but I'm asking, oh, what, what information do y'all have? Reaction, negative reaction, or reaction to, uh, the vaccine?
Well, first of all, all vaccines can have, you know, side effects, negative reactions. And all side effects are not necessarily a bad side effect. It means your body's building up immunity. And, um, but, um, I read the Pfizer and Moderna websites whenever I, you know, wanna read about the side effects of a vaccine. Um, you know, there are extreme cases of severe allergic reaction with all vaccines, and that has happened, you know, and with COVID vaccine as well. Um, so, you know, it is a personal decision, you know, as to whether or not someone wants a vaccine or not. So you have to weigh the benefits versus the risks. But I, before I took my vaccine, I actually read the information from the Moderna website when I took the Moderna vaccine.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate your time and your answers, and thank you for watching.
Miss, Miss Lanier.
Yes, sir.
What is the Health Director, what is she recommending for the school system?
Would you like my answer? Let that go out in the air.
Secretary, um, I actually received an email from Dr. Lanier today. Uh, she has requested that the board do approve universal masking, uh, for staff and students at this point. And she, um, it shared that she encouraged that, obviously, that would be reevaluated on a regular basis. So if the conditions are approved, you can always lessen the restrictions.
I'm sorry, that's a good thing about this.
Yeah, I do like that thing.
To revisit.
Come back from here.
But right now, uh, I, I call for the questions. I think Mr. Secretary's still on the floor. He did, he did say... Mr. Secretary, go ahead.
Yeah, Dr. Atkins, um, why, why do you think our Health Direct has come to, come to this conclusion of recommending masks in the schools?
Uh, Mr. Secretary, that's a good question, and she has, uh, we also say, actually, a couple things. Uh, she has growing concern over our current, uh, she has talked with Nurse Lanier, um, at quite a bit of length in terms of our schools at this point, and the cases and exposures that we have, um, prior to the start of school. Uh, she also shared, obviously, distant share information because of Kippa, but, um, there's growing concern of, of cases that we, we may not even know about that are connected to Blaine County school students' families. Um, so they shared, she gave some updated statistics about, uh, at the Blaine County today. But she shared some things that we've, they've had a growing concern, and Nurse Lanier, correct me if I'm wrong on this, growing concern with the age forty-nine and less in terms of, of the virus. Um, but they've seen those numbers go up quite a bit. Uh, and one of the concerns as well is, um, is vaccinations, it has not been to go down to the younger students at this point. Uh, so talking about siblings and those kind of things. So she, she just shared some general information, but also had concerns about where we are currently at this point prior to the beginning of school.
I want, also, I want, I wanna say, I wanna say this. Um, as board members, it's our duty and our obligation to protect the students of Blaine County. Not only our students, but protect our teachers, administrators, our certified staff, and everyone that's working in the school system. It's our obligation to make sure that everybody is safe. And, and, and right now, I, I am scared to death because I got to send my two kids back to school. One of my kids, twelve years old, has the vaccine. My seven-year-old doesn't have a vaccine. But he has to be amongst people that are not wearing the mask, and that concerns me. I'm not gonna put, I'm not gonna put my kids in any type of situation where they can be harmed. And I'm definitely not gonna put anybody else, child, where they can be harmed. Ever since I was an SRO in this county, I've been protecting the kids, and I've been protecting kids' lives. Not only kids, but any, any other person in this county. So as board members, like Mr. McCoy said, this is probably gonna be one of the biggest decisions that we ever gonna have to make. Know why? Because it's dealing with everybody, like my life, a little child's life, a teacher's life, administrator's life. And I'm, I'm not, and I'm very passionate about my kid. So I'm just asking you, let's do the right thing tonight. Because it's important not to just my family, but everybody's family in Blaine County.
Chair. Call. I have a call to order at this time. Uh, I'll give it to you, Ms. Valerie.
Thank you, sir. As I call your name, please indicate your vote. Chris Clark? Was that a yes or a no?
It's a yes.
Thank you. Tim Benton?
Aye.
Gary Rota?
Aye.
Vincent Roser?
Aye.
Cory Single Terry?
Aye.
Alan West?
Aye.
Glenn McCoy?
Aye.
Roger Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, you have six yeses and two nos.
And the motion carries. Uh, thank you, gentlemen. I have a motion adjourned. I have a motion by, uh, Mr. Tim Benton, taken by Mr. McCoy. I yield to you, um, Ms. Valerie, noon.
As I, thank you, sir. As I call your name, please indicate your vote. Chris Clark?
He said, uh, uh...
Thank you. Tim Benton? Gary Rota?
Aye.
Vincent Roser?
Aye.
Cory Single Terry?
Aye.
Alan West?
Aye.
Glenn McCoy?
Aye.
Roger Carroll?
Thank you, gentlemen, for, thank you, gentlemen, for, I'm sorry. And this meeting is adjourned.